Thank you all for joining us. The Colombian is pleased to welcome candidates for Clark County Chair. I'm Greg Jane, the editorial page editor. I believe you met the editorial board members. Also, just so you know, reporter Jake Thomas is sitting in on this. He might want to speak with you afterwards, but he won't be asking questions at this forum. For everyone who's been here before, you should know we are videotaping this. We will post it unedited on our website. So for the purpose of the video and for us, please make sure you speak up and speak clearly, if at all possible. Hopefully better than I do. So we will start with some introductions. Take just one or two minutes. Introduce yourself to us and to whoever might be watching and explain why you are running for this position. And then after that, we'll get into some specific policy issues. So we'll start at this end.
Hello. I'm Kristi Stanley, and I'm running because I feel that there has to be a voice for the citizens that is responsive to their concerns. A champion for getting things done in a timely fashion. I know that a lot of people out there know what I do, know what my profession is and my career path, and I may be-
Why don't you mention that?
Retail cannabis licensee for Clark County. The thing is, is that throughout the last four years since legalization, this isn't the first time that I've run into direct opposition even in my endeavors in presenting facts to different government bodies. And I get a little frustrated when what I am presenting as facts with good sourcing, for whatever reason, is either dismissed, or not addressed, or postponed.
And we will-
And does leave it there.
We will get into the specifics.
Right. But, you know, I need to say that part of my reason for running is you really get to a point in your life where if you can't get the results that you need to have, sometimes you've just got to do the job yourself and then work on similar issues that others may be facing in their endeavor to get something done that isn't being addressed in a timely fashion. So that's probably my biggest reason for running for this office, is to really be, you know, a strong voice for myself and other people like me who really would like to get some action. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good morning, afternoon, everybody. My name is Eric Holt, and I live in Hawkinson with my wife and three kids on a little five-acre parcel. We've got animals running all over our muck. And I'm running for the Clark County Chair because we need to bring effective leadership. We need to address transportation, infrastructure issues. We need to have affordable housing addressed, and we need to have better jobs for the people in Clark County, good-paying jobs. I mean, there's plenty of jobs in Clark County, but to the level that we need to sustain the cost of living, we're not there yet. So those are the reasons why I'm running. I believe I'd be the best fit because of my experience in different businesses where I've really brought change management into place, changed the culture, redirected where we were going, and had set an agenda, a vision, a mission, got everybody on task, and we got the job done. That's what we need in Clark County, and that's why I'm running.
Eric, what offices did you run for before?
Senate, the 18th Legislative District State Senate.
Great, okay, thank you. Great, thank you. Mark?
Thank you. I'm Mark Bolt. I'm the current county council chair, and I believe this is really two-part. First of all, it is my personal views. I believe that we need to move this county forward. As you know, we've had some pretty rocky times, so I've been able to bring us through the rocky times to the future, I believe. And I believe we that- I personally believe that we owe our county citizens to go further than even their expectations. The other part, though, under the county charter, is really the job of the chair, which nobody really seems, or is really probably on lock, probably not seen, I'll say. And it is working with the mayors, it is working with all the county staff, of course, working with all the councilors to make sure everybody is served, the meetings are well-run, everybody is respectful, heard, respected. And that's really, under the charter, a year's job. And really, this is one of the few opportunities where I speak for myself, not the council. When I'm out of this room, I don't have my views. The chair is to speak for the council. There's been several times where I have voted against the council, but when that happens, after the vote is done, that's your view. And so either you like the job or you don't. But under the charter, if you want to run it that way, you work for the rest of the council, and I hopefully we can bring this, start to bring this county forward.
Great, thank you. Eileen?
I'm Eileen Quiring, and I'm currently the representative council chair, council, county councilor for District 4, which is, I would say, maybe about a third, maybe, of the geographic area of the county right now. I would like to, I'm running for this position because I think that we need some really directive leadership in the county. I would say right now, I'm so passionate about Clark County becoming its own economic engine. I served on the Policy Advisory Committee just recently in Oregon regarding these value, this value pricing, otherwise known as tolls, to try to create some capacity on I-5 and II-05. And I think just being on that committee and recognizing that Clark County really needs its own identity and to blossom so that we don't have to have so many people driving across to Oregon. There are, you know, 70, 72,000 people that commute there on a daily basis, and Oregon doesn't seem very sympathetic to the cries of our people, because they have been, I think, pretty vocal in this whole situation. I also think we need to address transportation needs here. Need to make sure that we, that our growth is, or that our transportation needs are met according to our growth. And then our growth, as far as our comprehensive plan, that sort of thing, I think that we need to get some of the assumptions straightened out so that our urban growth boundary can be proper, the various cities can extend their urban growth boundaries to account for the actual growth in our county so that we can bring down the cost of housing. I attribute much of the high cost of housing, really has to do with kind of a false scarcity of land that is created because we don't, we cannot build on the land that we have. So I look forward to talking to you more about the various issues.
Great, thank you. We'll start with a specific issue. The county has been facing a budget shortfall. What do you think is the reason for that, and how do we address that? We'll start with Eric.
Well, I mean, by looking at the budget, you've got, you know, hundreds of line items, and we're nearing $187 million over a biennium. And in that, you've got regular growth, but we don't have the revenue sources to make up for that. We get about a third of our revenue from the taxpayers, we get about a third from the state in grants, and then we get about a third through permits and fees and just the process of the county. And so for the last several years, we've had an opportunity to just accept about a 1% increase on property values automatically, which the council has not taken advantage of that, which would clearly have closed a lot of that shortfall. Another big part of that is if we were to lift the moratorium on cannabis sales in the county. I mean, that's not going to be a huge market, but it's going to be enough to close that gap a little bit more so that we don't have to take services away from the people-
So you would favor that?
I definitely would favor that. So, you know, so anytime you have a budget shortfall, you've got to review your spending, and you've got to review your revenue sources, and, you know, I think that's something that the council really needs to take on and actively pursue, along with our budget director in the county and our treasurer.
Mark, what are your thoughts on that?
Yeah, first of all, we're going back to an annual budget. This year, we've gone to a biannual budget in the past, and really, we're essentially doing annual budgets all the time, but we're biting through the system of biannual budget. So I think that will help us become more flexible. The other thing really is, when you look at the perceived budget loss, it is really when we factor all the employee increases and everything else, within all of them increases, yes, we're short about $4 million, I think with sales tax coming up, it's probably closer to $3 million. So on our baseline budget, we're still doing pretty good. We're going to collect more money. So if a person says, "County isn't collecting more money," they're wrong. We are going to collect more money. It's just how we handle really our employees, our budgets, I mean, our benefits package, everything that, because about 70% of us, of the package of the budget, is in personnel costs. So that is really what we do. And about half of them, people wear badge and carry a gun that's in interest arbitration that we have very little control over. So we have to work with them employees, we have to work with the managers, the unions, things like that, if we're going to get through this. And we have to, really, I think we're doing a good job explaining the budget to all the 1,200 citizens the same. Let's all work through this, and since we're under this limited budget, let's go get through it in a manageable level, and I believe we can.
Eileen?
Well, they say that we have a shortage, but I think that we have to examine our budget very carefully. And I think a year ago, we were talking about priority-based budgeting. Then we discovered what actually priority-based budgeting is, is it's a nice fancy term to have some sort of criteria that really doesn't mean a whole lot. So that was dropped. So the next, the thing that is happening right now, as Mark said, we are going to do an annual budget, which I think is a very positive move forward, because we're always doing supplemental budgets. But that annually-based budget, we can plan on a yearly basis rather than two years, always, you know, forecasting. But what this leadership team is looking at, that is not us, it's department heads and division heads, et cetera. They're looking at a program-based budget. And those, they're designed, it's really designed to be a little bit more outcome-based. My hope is, is that they're looking for redundancies and overlaps of various things so that we can make sure that we're funding the proper things. And if it's no longer useful, or it's not doing its job anymore, perhaps we can, you know, move, move what portion, maybe there's a portion that's doing well. Okay, so you move that portion into another department that's doing a similar thing. There's also-
Do you have any specific examples of someplace where some savings could be found?
Well, I just know that I've worked in the public sector before, and I've been in on management decisions about budget-making. And often, what will be talked about is saving these positions that are not filled so that you can still have that baseline in your budget. That's one thing. I also think that even though we are in our planning department right now, there's really a change happening there. And I think that they're looking at many things that could be redundancies as some permit goes right through the process, et cetera. But I would guarantee you that if employees in each department would have an opportunity to talk about what might be steps eliminated, that they would find these things. Do I have a specific idea? No, I don't, because I haven't been going line by line. But I can assure you, as we go through the budget process, that is something that we will begin to look very closely at.
Kristi, thoughts on the county budget?
So basically, pretty much what, a little bit of what everyone else here has said. Definitely, and I've said this before, to address redundancies. But I also think that redundancies are based on policy. And I think that there has to be a discussion about looking at policies and procedures that are slowing processes down for building, construction, the committing process. I know that there's a moratorium for a while with the growth management, if I'm not mistaken, that, you know, is that there's so much stagnation happening, and the more stagnation that you have, either in a business or in a government body, that's just like Texas Hold'em. That blind keeps coming around, and you still have to pay the bills every month. So that costs money. So any slowdowns in government processes, in any, you know, assigning of a study group to study this issue, or a committee to study this issue, is all, it all boils down to money, dollars spent. And I think that's where you could find a lot of savings in the budget, to either maintain it or not grow it. That's the main thing, is to not grow the budget, not to go beyond that. So that's kind of the short answer.
Could I get a point of clarification here? What, Mark, when you were saying, were you referring to making a budget shortfall by renegotiating contracts with unions? When you were bringing that topic-
Well, no, we're not renegotiating contracts, but our contracts constantly come up. So it's just to have a frank discussion between our budget and contract, so, which we do all the time.
So you see, you see as making a budget shortfall is by having the workers of Clark County carry that weight?
No, not at all. I'm, I think that, you know, with our health insurance especially, which is about a third of that, we have a healthcare committee, and if we can drive healthcare costs down, well, that helps everybody. So, thank you.
Kind of sticking on a related topic to the budget, the jail is overcrowded and outdated, and I think, either way, taxpayers are looking at a bit of a price tag on that. What would be your preferred approach to that, sort of, Mark?
Well, the consultant has kind of a preferred brick-and-mortar statement, but really, as you know, you've covered, Jake's covered it a lot, is this 21-person commission that's studying the jail. So they're looking at, first of all, essentially, the brick-and-mortar is really the easy part, and it's really how you run the jail is the hard part, because as you, as we look at a lesson from Wapato, we don't want an empty jail that we can't afford to run. So as we look at that, we really have to spend really just about as much of the time what happens inside the jail than the jail itself. And I'm sure it is, we have our own ideas. I would like, personally, like to remodel the jail, have a really concerned effort of a triage about the people going into jail if they're diverted to the homeless few, homeless things, or a male health triage facility. What happens in the jail that will really look where a officer is within inmates, keeps morale a lot better, and it's safe for the officers themselves. And then to build upon our reentry programs that we've really, it's one of the most successful in the state now, to keep people from going in that other door. So we will definitely be coming to the voters for, you know, bond measure. However, you know, we realize after the McCleary decision, it is a uphill, uphill grind to get a bond measure now, so, because very people are skeptical. So just like the school district, we have to prove our point, what happens to the jail itself and what happens within the jail.
Is there a timeframe on coming to the voters with the bond measure?
The, hopefully, the committee will have their decision to us, the council, in November, maybe early December, and then it is up to us. I would hope springtime, something like that, for bond measure, depending on-
Eileen, what would be your preferred approach to the jail?
Well, as Mark said, we did have, there was a consultant who had a whole plan, and of course, that was a beautiful plan, but it has a big price tag. It does use the most modern and acceptable best practices for direct supervision of the inmates. And at my time in the legislature that I spent, I was corrections chairs-
I'm sorry, that was in Oregon, right?
Yes, it was.
Okay, I just wanted to-
Yes, it was. And, you know, we, Oregon built a women's jail, or prison. For the state, it's a prison; for the county, it's a jail. At any rate, just knowing a little bit about how the supervision model has changed over the years since this jail was built. And if any of you have not had a tour of the jail, you should actually take a tour of the jail, because it really is outdated, and it is over, I was going to say, it's not overrun, but it's overpopulated. I mean, they have had to move things around, and now they're, the place where they have intake is just a very small little hallway. I have concern both for those that are being booked, but mostly, you know, the personnel bits in the jail is, it's got to be tough on them, too. So the, I think this quote-unquote "blue ribbon" committee, that is really made up of a large number of people, but I think they're going to bring in some very good ideas. But they've had tours of other jails, they're looking at all the possibilities, they've been told to think outside the box. But, so, I'm really going to rely upon them, because I haven't seen some of the other ideas besides this, you know, consultant's report that was, you know, starting with one and adding, you know, being able to add more onto it as time goes. But it's possible, I suppose, to remodel this jail? My understanding from when we talked about that earlier, though, the cost of that is pretty high, too. So we just have to be very circumspect about it. And I, you know, I think that this blue ribbon committee is going to determine sort of the amount, the, you know, what they think is going to be the amount, or anything that we would go to ask taxpayers for, you know, when they're finished with their duties and advising.
Thank you. Kristi, how should we approach the jail?
So I really think that the right approach would be, like Irene said, to think outside the box. I don't necessarily, of course, rely on a good sound committee, you know, and a study through, but to go for as long as it's been going to do the study, I think is unacceptable. And what's wrong with just asking the general public and holding open hearings on what the public thinks about what are some of the solutions for the jail? I don't know a lot about the state mandates and handling prisoners, but I'll bet you there's a lot of healthy guys and women, maybe, that can work on the jail themselves if a program of remodeling the jail is instituted, and maybe they could earn some college credits or somehow get rehabilitated in the actual reconstruction portion of the jail. I do think that moving inmates to facilitate the space needed to rebuild parts of the jail in sections at a time, those inmates could be transported to the vacant jail that's in Oregon as a holding facility, maybe some of those less skilled. But why not? Why not ask some of these inmates if they would care to participate in the rebuilding of it, maybe as a reduction in their sentence for some of the, you know, non-receptive people who are in there? It's just, like she said, thinking out of the box and try to come up with as many ideas as possible for this solution that's long overdue. I mean, this is an old structure, you know, from the 80s, you know, it's just a lawsuit waiting to happen, you know, with the inmates, and like she, like Irene said, you know, this has got to be hard on the staff and the guards there, you know, having to deal with, you know, their level of frustration is, you know, is a whole nother topic. And, you know, you could even solicit some of these guards as, say, you know, superintendents in conjunction with private construction companies to really tackle this problem in-house. And there's going to be some budget savings there, you know? And also, give some of these prisoners, or these jail inmates, a sense of pride. Unbelievable as it seems, you know, there is great pride in doing hard work with your own hands. So that's just kind of my thoughts.
Eric?
Well, I mean, in a, to address a quick thing that Kristi said, that according to the Washington State Constitution, which as the county, we abide by their rules, were an extension of their services, we are not allowed to utilize jail services outside the county seat. So whatever we do, we'd have to move, you know, the Wapato prison, or the facility is not an option for us. The big picture, the perfect world answer would be, let's address incarceration before they get to the prison. So let's address mental health crisis, let's address opioid abuse and drug abuse, let's decriminalize a lot of the activities that are not detrimental to society. But that's not where we are right now. So we have to, we have to address it from where we are at this point in time, and that is, we have an overcrowded prison, or a jail system that's incredibly old and is in need for desperate upkeep. I think Chief Rick Bishop has done a fantastic job, doing the best with what he's had, with making sure that we have a great program for reentry into society. I think these programs are fantastic. And the fact is, if we build a new jail, we're looking at a minimum $200 million. And that's just, that's a minimum number. And that's not anything that we have in the budget, which means it would have to be a bond action, and which means additional interest paid by the people of Clark County. So we've got to analyze what our options are, what we can do to address issues before we get to that, and make sure that that's the best choice for the people of Clark County.
You know, if, as a citizen, say, not on the council, if the council put forth a $200 billion bond in February, would you support that?
Not currently with our AA1 rating. We're going to pay more in interest than we would if we had a AAA rating. And the only way we're going to get to a AAA rating is if we increase the wages of the people of Clark County. So we need better living wage jobs right here. That should be the first thing we should be addressing.
What should the county be doing with the Growth Management Act? Would you answer it?
Sure, I'll go ahead with this, and I guess I'll be second. First of all, I think that the overlays, they're reasonable, but I do think that a decision has to be, you know, again, I'm talking about the wheels are turning too slowly. You know, I do believe that there are lands available, you know, to expand on, but, you know, you've got a certain camp of people who want to keep it local, keep it rural, keep it, you know, wild and pristine. And then you've got the other camps, specifically the Builders Association, which I can see their desire as business people to want to expand to these other areas, because it's probably more cost-effective, virgin land, rather than demolition of existing properties within the current boundaries, and then, you know, having to rebuild and do that sort of endeavor, and then, of course, build up. But I think that there could be a balance, a dual approach to this problem, you know? Maybe have it to where, you know, kind of like the government does a trade-off for industry, you know? So if you're going to put an industry here, you also have to have that industry buy a certain amount of green space, wherever that may be, to offset the impact that the industry will make to that particular area. So if you approach it from the perspective of finding out and identifying those landowners who are more than willing to let the growth managements expand into their areas at the same time, that identify property owners within the current boundaries who would also like to participate, and then just find that balance to where you're not encroaching too much on these, you know, natural, pristine, you know, scenic areas with more sprawl and bedroom communities, of more commuters having to go across that bridge, and then potentially in four or five years, pay a toll, okay? Have that really in balance with what's going on with the current overlay. That's kind of my belief. And then also, jeez, why not bring some of those jobs that people are commuting to in Oregon, bring them here? Put them in the other cities, Battleground, Brush Prairie, Ridgefield, you know, I'm sure, all these areas.
But having, you can't just pick up jobs and move them there?
No, 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 absolutely not. But what you can do is incentivize those particular employers who, you know, are located there in Oregon, in Portland, and say, "Look, you know, we have what you need over here, you know, why don't we work with you?" Why don't we work with you on some sort of agreement that if you move your business here and you bring those Washingtonians back to this particular area, you know, maybe it's going to be in the form of some sort of tax break for a while, you know?
So, did you favor the fee waivers that the county had for a time? For developers?
I do, I do. I, I do, and, and for a time, that's the thing, it's just for a specific time. That's the thing, it's not indefinite. But, but more importantly is, you've got 60,000 to 70,000 people transporting, you know, in, in a very clogged, I don't like driving in Portland, definitely something has to be done, you know? We just, we just have a population here that, number one, can't afford their house, they can't, you know, 50% of their income is unheard of, you know, it should be more than 130%, but the good-paying jobs aren't here, you know? Even if, even if the ban were to be lifted, and you could open up four more retail stores and, you know, 20 to 30 producer-processers that could employ 30 to 40 people each, you know, you're still looking at, to begin with, the majority of those jobs are going to be at minimum or above paying jobs with the supervisors and the industry coordinators and product acquisition managers and such, being paid a higher wage. So, those jobs would be paying those individuals in the community higher wages. So, I definitely think, already you've got one industry that's here, that you could utilize now. And, you know, it's just a matter of how can you get these employers to want to locate in some of these other areas? And, you know, for instance, I, I believe there's a solution for asphalt plant going in.
I'm sorry, maybe cut you off. Would Eric, Growth Manager?
So, I think Clark County has been a little too friendly with, with builders and the Growth Management Act. Currently, we are violating some of the agreements with, with the state and have lost some of our transportation dollars because of that. We are exceeding the amount of acreage that we're supposed to have available for, for the trade-offs between urban growth boundaries and the, and the, and the development. So, I think what we don't need to do is continue to pave over Clark County with $650,000 McMansions, and we need to address affordable housing in a way that, that is accessible to the majority of the people who live here. And so, that's building within our urban growth boundaries, building vertically, building green, sustainably, and, and giving access to, to, I mean, I think they were saying that 100,000 home, home units need to be built in the Portland metro area in the next few years to address the, the housing needs of today, and I don't want that all to be in Clark County. So, I need, I really believe in, in maintaining the rural atmosphere that we have in, in unincorporated county. We have a lot of people who enjoy the, the bigger parcels of land. I, I, I'm split on, on how we do a development in the Clark, in Clark County, because I don't wanna see subdivisions of McMansions popping up where, where 100, you know, Century Farm was. But I do believe that if a family has held on to 40 acres for 100 years, and they wanna break off pieces of that to let, to allow their family to, to live on the property with them, then I think that's perfectly acceptable. So, those are, those are some of the ways that I would, I would address it.
Now, in talking about density and building up, so, that would be up with the cities, though, because you would do that in an urban area. So, if you're on the county council, would you say, we are not going to promote growth in the unincorporated area, we're gonna leave it to the cities, you guys deal with the density and the, the growing population?
Well, there's a certain negotiation that goes on with the urban growth boundaries. And so, and, and what we are lacking right now on the council is, is that coalition between the cities and, and the county. A lot of people have it in their mind that, that county is unincorporated county, but the county is everything that encapsulates the, the boundaries of the county, including all of the cities. And we have to work in partnership with every single city, meeting with the city managers and the mayors and the councils, to make sure that we all have a shared vision going forward for the county. So, part of that is, how do they want to see their urban growth boundaries modified or taken advantage of in a way that, that benefits every, every, all of the groups, the stakeholders in Clark County?
Mark, Growth Management?
Yeah, essentially, as most of you know, you know, the county has the responsibility of growth management, and essentially, we have to have the, take care of the perceived increase in population for the next 20 years, and housing, wherever it is, inside the urban growth boundary or outside. Along with that, there's 13 goals of the Growth Management Plan Act in Washington that we have to abide by. And they're really, even though I think Futurewise kinda puts them in priority, they're not supposed to be in priority at all. So, when it comes to us, currently, we have a plan that really didn't do much. I was really the, one of the ones that did the 90, or the 2004 plan, which we added most of the land we're using now. But when it happened to 2000, the last plan that we had, we started with a bad population estimate, and it kinda continued forward. The problem, one of the problems that we have is that we have a hearing's board of three people that's unelected, that really governs everything. So, before you get to court, they say your plan is invalid, which I think is being covered in a, in a paper pretty quick. So, with Futurewise and maybe the opponents of the plan, they say to the county, all right, we're gonna go to the hearing's board, we're gonna ask the hearing's board to make it invalid, and until you go to court, you're not acceptable for any land. As I've always said before, I can live with a court decision. Guy puts on a robe, tells me what to do, I'm fine with it. But I'm not fine with it when three people of, unlikely, appointed by the governor, tells me really what to do. So, we've had several bills in the legislature for us to go directly to court and say, let's get this done, either, because everybody is in limbo, our developers, everything is in limbo sometimes of these hearing's board decisions. We have a governor now, that is fairly environmental, that I've talked to quite a few times, when I was in the legislature, Governor Locke, I think they had 23 bills to change growth management, 23 bills were vetoed by Governor Locke. We have a governor now that is even more environmental than Governor Locke, so it's a very hard push. But I think that the counties, Association of Washington Counties, that actually we're both on, I served as president of that, is that we can tinker with the Growth Management Act. And also, we're gonna have the Ruffel House Committee, the Ruffel House is a very knowledgeable man, very respected on both sides of the aisle, they're gonna come down here in the fall, listen to us, I've offered our hearing room up for that, and then they're gonna make some recommendations, and hopefully, some of these will just get us to probably a, a better act where we can bring maybe the builders and Futurewise and the committee closer together, so we can have this discussion.
Eileen?
Well, the GMA, there are a couple of things that have been brought up. Comprehensive plan is one, GMA is a totally different thing, because as Mark said, this is a state law that was implemented in the 90s, and it hasn't had that many amendments to it. We had this pass, in 2017, an amendment was created, and this amendment was written specifically for Clark County, and it's for our rail dependent uses. The, the bill started in the House, and Clark County was the county it was written for, it went over to the Senate, the Senate stuffed in about, you know, 15 other counties, the governor said, I'm not signing that, then it was renegotiated with only two counties. But specifically, this bill amended the GMA so that we can use the resource land along the railroad that the county owns. It is a county gem, in my opinion. This is one of the ways that I believe that we can bring family wage jobs to this county. Once that is, we need, right now, a subgroup has looked at it, at the, at the development rules, et cetera, and they've come forward with ideas, those ideas will go to the, to the planning commission, and then it'll come to the commission. I think that they've really been thinking outside the box, but one thing that, as I've been watching this and participated in it in a sense that I have really kinda tried to push it along, because I just feel passionate about it, this railroad is, is in my district for the most part, and I just think it has such great potential, that what we wanna do is, we do wanna protect the rural areas and those that have these five-acre parcels, and I think some of those individuals are very worried about the fact that we might have some industrial growth out there. But if we buffer these, any of these industrial plants that, that decide to, to move here to Clark County, they, they should be fine with it. If you look at SEH, you know, 112th Avenue, you can hardly tell, you don't know what's back there. So, that kind of buffering, so that we're protecting the people around it. As far as our comprehensive plan and our urban growth boundaries, et cetera, we do work with the cities very well. In this particular, this last go-around, Delo Center and Ridgefield, both expanded their boundary, and the hearing's board didn't like that, or Futurewise didn't like it, and they, and they appealed it, and therefore, and there are some things that we can fix, that we have fixed, or that are going to, to Superior Court. But that leaves us invalid or out of compliance. It's not invalidity, I don't believe, I believe it's out of compliance. But what that does is it sets aside our getting grants from the state while we're in this, while we're in this state, although we're asking, we are asking that that be removed, because it's mainly the center and Ridgefield that are the big problems with their extension of their management.
Now, if generally, you're in favor of allowing smaller parcels in rural areas?
In, in the rural, yes, I am. Yes, I am. I, I agree with what Eric said about people who have these large parcels, who when they purchased these parcels, and before they owned them in the 90s, or before the 90s, when this came about, always planned to divide their parcels with their family members and have sort of a compound. It's not about developing, having a developer come out there and put a bunch of McMansions. My part and my passion really is for these people, or, or this 80-year-old forest owner who had 80 acres of forest, who said, I can't really keep up with my forest anymore, my son comes out and helps me take care of it, but I would like for him to build one acre, you know, divide one acre off of this 80, put a house here so he can live here, because he goes to work, too. But if he lived out there, you know, he could help his father more. It's that kind of restriction that I think is, it's sad, and, and it really, I consider it a taking, really, and I, and so, you know, that's a concern. The vacant, buildable lands model, I think, is skewed, which then makes the wrong assumptions for our overall plan, and we are looking at that now, we've had a work session on it, and if we put the right numbers in there, in other words, we're, the population growth is set at a lower rate than really we should expect. It's lower than our historical rate. And so, I think that based upon changing our VLBN, that will help us to plan ahead for those, for those acreages in the, in the coming.
Sorry, I'm sorry, if you have any follow-up on that. Let's move on to marijuana, the county has a moratorium on marijuana businesses. Christie, you said that's one of the reasons that you're running.
Yeah, absolutely.
So, I assume you think they should lift the moratorium?
Absolutely.
Why?
I'm sorry, what did you ask?
Why?
Why do they?
Why should they lift the moratorium?
Well, because it's going to provide much-needed tax revenue, and I know that Jeannie Stewart had made a comment at one of the study groups, saying, well, that's not that much. Well, $700,000 in tax revenue is more than nothing. Besides just the tax revenue, it's going to give the community good-paying jobs, even if they're entry-level jobs, those jobs will escalate into management positions, because kind of the sky is the limit with this industry right now. The US government has a Senate Bill 3032, that is in the works by Elizabeth Warren and Cory Gardner from Colorado, to soon make this legal, for legal marijuana states on a federal level, which will then open up banking for our industry, it will open up the restrictions of 280E, which is a very daunting tax burden on retail marijuana businesses and producers and processors, in that currently, we're not allowed to take normal business deductions, which is crippling our industry. So, now more than ever, all of these 60 or so marijuana retailers statewide for, for Clark County, we need these stores open so that we can offset the expenses that are incurred. For instance, in my situation, for the one store that I do have open, now that store in that other county is paying the bills for this county, that store there is paying the rent, the electric, everything for this store in this county, and it sits idle, and there's no reason for it. We presented the council with the facts, these are medical facts, from, you know, such distinguished places, the American Cancer Institute, you know, the Liquor and Cannabis Board, things like, you know, worried about crime increase, or increase in youth drug usage, all of those statistics are skewed, and they're incorrect, and we presented much data, and we can even present more. But the bottom line is, is this is gonna provide an avenue for an industry to get in before it's too late, because this is soon to go federal. And I think Clark County is gonna get left in the dust if they don't, that's a draw to make.
I'm curious, and I can understand your interest and your passion regarding cannabis. Aside from that, what do you think is the biggest issue facing the county? What would be your priority if you were to chair?
The biggest issue facing the county, other than this issue?
Yes.
Other than the marijuana issue?
Yes.
I think it's absolutely affordable housing. I think it's this, you know, this, this, it is the fact that, you know, you've got this population boom that's coming, you know, and that's going to lend itself to a whole slew of problems, you know, ranging from homelessness, ranging all the way from homelessness to incarceration, because these people are sleeping and getting arrested, you know, behind, behind dumpsters, or wherever these, you know, homeless people, I mean, Battleground doesn't even have a homeless shelter. And, and this is something that I would look into. So, so absolutely, that would be my priority.
Okay. Eric, what are your thoughts on, should the county lift the moratorium?
Definitely, and I, I look at it as a three, a three-fold issue. For one, it's, it's revenue, and it's gonna come in and, and assist that budget shortfall. For two, it's accessibility for people who might not be able to get into the cities, and so, it's, it's just improving the quality of life. I've met a lot of, of terminal patients who, who take cannabis for treatment, just to improve their quality of life during the late stages. And to have that accessibility for those people is, is, is something we should be allowing to, to the people in our community. The third piece is, it's great for addressing opioid addiction, you know, if people had some, an alternative to go to rather than the opioids and heroin epidemic, we could actually address that and reduce some of the problems we have in this county, using some of the revenues to help offset some of that treatment. So, it's, for me, it's pretty easy, cut and dry. We are an extension of the state as county, our job is to represent the interest of the state, the state voted in favor of cannabis sales, so, I mean, we, I don't see any other way, other than just supporting what the people have already voted for.
Now, Mark, I believe you voted to uphold the moratorium. Real quick.
Okay. And I voted to uphold the moratorium, because the purpose, really, our job as a county from the state, is to do drug and alcohol and mental health treatment. That's, that's what we do. And so, as I look at both area, I see both sides of it, but I, and really, to tell you the truth, you have to err on one side, so I'd rather err on the side of the county, where we really provide drug and alcohol treatment, and I think it just sends the wrong message that the county upholds that. Plus, we have the drug task force that's against it, our sheriffs against it, prevention groups are against it, school superintendents, we have all the gamut that really have talked to us and are against it.
And Eileen, I believe?
And for many of the reasons that Mark stated there, I think that with freedom, with freedom comes responsibility, and unfortunately, the county will take on more responsibility when we legalize that. We'll have to increase this drug and alcohol treatment, we'll have to increase sheriffs and law enforcement, and, and I, you know, with all of the, the organizations that are also against it because of, I think, I really worry about the youth. They see that something is legal, they think it's okay, and many of the youth that talk about using marijuana are using it because their parents are using it. So, it's not good for the, a youthful brain, just like alcohol isn't, and just like any other drug isn't, but I just, I just don't agree that we should lift the moratorium, partly as a county, because of our responsibility that will come, that will fall upon us, any revenue that we get. Any revenue that we get, I think, will be completely dissipated by the additional responsibilities we will take on as a county.
Yeah, I'm curious, just so you guys agree on that, you disagree on some things. There, why are you running for the chair of the group? There be any tension during or following the election between the two of you? Has it so far?
Yeah, what I, Mark and I have both run for offices many times and have held elected positions. I feel like we know what it's like to run against somebody. I like Mark personally, so it is nothing personal. And I just think that I could be a little bit stronger leader. And of course, he disagrees, but...
Kristi, have you run for office before?
I've never run for office. I just need to make a comment, one thing that Eileen said is, you know, you already have marijuana legal here in the cities. And drug and alcohol abuse counseling, you know, hasn't increased because those legal businesses are here in Battleground and in the city of Vancouver. Furthermore, the dollars that would come in would be able to be used for added law enforcement positions, for additional educational and drug and alcohol counseling uses. So I think that, you know, that statement needs to be looked at.
So I'm curious, if you haven't run for, why start with county chair? I mean, I think most people would shoot a little lower for their first election.
Well, you know, go big or go home. I'm in the district and this election cycle puts me in a unique position that I am able to run for this position. And I have complete confidence in my tenacity and capability and understanding to really grasp the entirety of the job at hand. I've managed, you know, small business prior to my marijuana industry days. And, you know, that meant a lot of, you know, oversight of employees and managed my family of four children and got them off high school and then into their careers. And so I feel that, you know, everyone starts somewhere. And for me, you know, starting in this position would be no different than starting in, say, like you said, a lower, more menial position, if you will. Because every job that I do, I take that job very seriously and it isn't, it isn't a matter of what that job is. I could be the janitor or I could be, you know, the CEO. Either way, it's the same. I put the same passion.
If you were not in this race, who would you vote for?
If I were not in this race, well, all of the fellow candidates here bring a lot to the table.
But who would you vote?
But I would definitely vote for my friend Eric Holt here because, you know, I feel that it's time to change, time to change, you know.
Eric, who would you vote for?
Well, it depends on who makes it through the top two. So if you want to pick a top two for me and I'll...
No, you need to pick one of the other three.
Well, I know, just out of elimination, I know that none of us want to go back to the Midor Milky years. And so as much as I like Eileen, I probably wouldn't be a big supporter. I don't think there's anything wrong with her beliefs. It's just on opposing sides of what I believe in. If I wanted things to maintain the same and the same direction, I'd support Mark Bolt because we're on a trajectory and it's going to remain the same. And I like a lot of the ideas that...
But who would you vote for?
You know, I would probably have to stick with another Democrat because at least I know that she's saying her core values as a Democrat and that means something, you know. To, no offense to Mark Bolt, but to say that you're nonpartisan when you're actually a conservative person misleads a lot of the general public to think, "Oh, well, he's going to represent my views as a Democrat." Well, no, not really. If he supports a moratorium, if he's pro-life and voted for Trump, that doesn't really represent my views as a Democrat and that's important to me. So at least she has the strength to say, "I'm a Democrat," and that's what she's going to say.
Eileen, is it fair to mention with Midor and Milky?
No.
Why not? What are the differences?
Well, you can see the differences. I think, well, the difference, I think that there was a perceived discontent and ranker on the council. I think it was just, it was just a mix of people. I think that David Midor was really moved too fast with policy and so he was perceived as a really...
But did you agree with his policy and...
I agree with many, absolutely, I agreed with many of his policies and I agreed with Tom Milky's policies. They're conservatives, I'm a conservative. So, but we're talking about, he doesn't want to go back to the days of Milky and Midor. Luckily, Lou is there to create constant antagonism in the city. But, you know, I don't think it's fair because that era is over. We have a different era, we've moved on.
And who would you vote for if you were not?
Myself.
If you were not in the race?
If I wasn't in the race?
Yes.
I would vote for Mark.
Mark, who would you vote for?
This is a lewd question.
Yes, it is. Yes, it's a real question. It's anonymous.
And it is a hard one. I'd probably, it's hard, but I'd, my, it would be between Eileen and Eric. The only reason I would probably go with Eric is that, looking at the council, the council's going to change, I think, and you're going to have a diverse people. And I think you need a person that can talk to every council person. Because my job as the chair is to make sure every council person has their view regardless of what it is. And I spend most of my time, you know, just trying to serve that, working behind the news. So if you have a Democrat that maybe is in the Vancouver position, you know, you've got to make sure that that Democrat has as much say as this. So I would probably between the two, I don't know.
And something Eric said, is it accurate that you voted for Trump?
I think I did, yeah, yeah.
Would you vote for him again right now if the election were today?
If there was, I was a Rubio guy, but he didn't like it, you know. So I would hope for another R, I guess.
Just curious, yes, beyond the purview, but Eric brought it up, so...
I have a little question. So Eric, what line of work are you on?
Safety and Operations Management in the mining industry.
Okay. And then I was just curious about both of your community involvement as far as, you know, what, if you, including if you attend council meetings regularly. So if you can just fill me in a little bit on that, start with Kristi.
So my community involvement lately has been going to the two different government body meetings, both in University Place and in Clark County. My community outreach basically has been very hampered prior to the legalization of marijuana. I did do a lot of community outreach in that community where I then lived, which is in Kitsap County, through the food bank and through another health white house at Ave Bridge Island. But once, and I'm not sure too many people know the rigors of going through the marijuana vetting process, but it's incredibly intense and it's very time-consuming. And then the amount of time spent with having to keep up those tax reports and et cetera were very hard and the learning curve was hard for the first, I'd say, six months that that original store opened. But now that is all streamlined and I have managers in place who do run that store. So now I'm finding myself in a unique position to actually have the time to run for council chair position and be able to do that job effectively if elected.
Okay.
Well, as far as our community, I'm a proud father of a Hawkinson High School Drama lettered student who had just lettered in drama. And I was really proud to be able to help the drama team out during the Hawkinson Fund Days Parade and tow their float, which got first place in the investigative show. So, and I have, two of my boys are in Scouts, so we do a lot of community issues with, donations with Scouts, cleaning up parks. We just cleaned up the Battleground Park not too long ago. My wife and I are members of the Washington Trails Association, so we work to keep our trails clear and clean. I'm a regular contributor to a lot of the, a lot of the community issues that we have in supporting the fire department and the state police. And so I just, I try to be as involved as I can. We do, we have a very small parcel in Hawkinson. We have eggs and chickens and goats and whatnot. And we try to give back to our community whenever we have surplus of anything and so...
Got it. And Captain Elliot, look here.
So, great, we'll move on then and we'll wrap it up. Give us your final pitch for why voters should support you. And please mention any prominent endorsements and we'll start with Eileen.
Well, I think voters should vote for me because I will bring a voice, a strong voice to leadership, to the council. I've owned my own small business, I've had employees and I've worked in the public and credit sectors. And I think I understand what goes on with both our employers around and with the government as it is. I've served in other leadership positions and most of the time in an organization when I serve, somehow I end up in a leadership position. Many times my peers move in that direction. So I think I can make Clark County better, of course, with the help of Clark County citizens.
And, I'm sorry, any prominent endorsements?
I have the endorsement of the State Committeeman. Actually, I have a lot of endorsements, just general people over two hundred have endorsed me.
Thank you.
Rather than go through the various...
Sure. Mark, final pitch.
Yeah, I'm just always humbled to go up for election. I love this job. I was, as you know, I was a freeholder and I believe in the charter. But I believe in my job under the chart, that you really do most of the work behind the scenes and you serve everybody, whether it's the council or the other employees or the other electeds. And I think I've brought this council from pretty rough times to good times. As you know, that we are not ending here. We've made some decisions over the last year, county manager change and other things that have really said, "We're moving forward." I think also, we, I bring a good balance of county employee recognition. I stroll the halls, I know the county employees by name. At the same time, I'm here to make them accountable as we strive to get our permit process together and things like that. As again, I'm out and about, you know, whether it's a gravel pit or last night, speaking of community involvement, last night and probably tonight, I spent the night with fire marshal giving gift certificates to people who sent out, who, you know, put out fireworks, $500 apiece. So I probably did a score many votes of them people, but it's just good to know how hard the county employees work and I just love serving the people, ask for their vote.
Okay, thank you. And any endorsements?
I have the endorsement of the Farm Bureau so far. And I received an elected labor award about three months ago.
Okay, thank you. Eric, your final pitch?
Well, for endorsements, I've got quite a few electeds. Doug Lasher, Treasurer of Clark County. I've got the chairs of the local LDs and county party. I've got a whole slew of people, community people who just live in our communities and want to see change. I usually wear a button on my jacket that has a little ant on it. And it's to remind me that everything that we work towards in life takes the work of everyone working together. Every single person in this community has value and all of us have to pull together to make true change to what we want to believe in. It's not the work of just one person as chair or just the council. It takes the efforts of every single person in this county. And so moving forward, I continue to carry that with me to know that every person in this county among us needs to be listened to, not just the Builders Association, not just the Realtors, not just special interests. We actually have to have everyone have a voice at the table. And as county, as chair, my job would be to listen to every voice and to listen to the concerns of all the people. That's why we have these weekly meetings with hearings at the end, to allow the people in the community to let their voices be heard and to be receptive to that. So when they are talking to us, they're not talking at us. They want us to listen and to hear their concerns. And I think that's what we need on the council. I think we need a solid leadership also to make sure that when we hear these voices, we set a plan in action and be able to follow through and hold ourselves accountable to that. And I think I'd be the best person for that because of my work experience and my drive and my ambition and my dedication to the community.
Thank you. Kristi, your final pitch, why should voters support you?
Well, is there anything left? So for many of the reasons that the, my fellow candidates said, I feel that as a, as a community leader, you absolutely have to remember your roots. You have to remember where you came from and what you, what got you to where you are, you know, those people who are currently in the struggle. You know, you have to identify with the everyday average citizen, you know, and not get so wrapped up in the processes and in the policy and in the meetings, you know. Take the time to go onto social media and just read the comments to what people are talking about. Go and do some, you know, outreach with the community in the sense of donating your time to a shelter or a women's clinic or, you know, I feel that what I bring to this is common sense approach. You know, I'm a blue dog Democrat. I'm not screaming liberal, lefty, crazy like all the social media keeps talking that lately, you know, the discourse and the dialogue has got us so polarized. That's not what I am about and that is absolutely what I will bring to this office, is a civility and, you know, a balance, a real true balance to what the priorities are and what is the job that is the most pressing that we have to look at. But at the same time, being able to validate and acknowledge the community members and the citizens who are still rankering and screaming for attention for their projects to be heard and their voices to be heard. That's what I bring to this office. That's what I would do if elected.
And, I'm sorry, any endorsements?
You know, I am working on my interviews. I am awaiting a couple of endorsements, but so far, you know, what you see is what you get. I'm here.
Well, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you all.
You can check my website for the endorsement page.
Sure, yeah, yeah, right away. Thank you.